Okay, starting now. All right, I was impressed by the flags up there on the, as I went to the liquor control meeting. I thought it probably, the number is roughly equivalent to the number of soldiers killed in Iraq, too. So, can remember both of those things. All right, we're gonna start this evening's proceedings with the Planning and Development Committee meeting.
Thanks Nancy. We have a lot of things on the agenda for Planning and Development. I think that we can get through some of them a little bit more quickly than it may look like. So, the first thing on our agenda this evening is the comprehensive plan. What I'm thinking about this, I'm aware that people who served on the Steering Committee have been reviewing the comprehensive plan as it was finalized and approved by the Steering Committee, and as it was passed by the Planning Commission, to go through and just see what changes have been made and if there are any areas of concern in terms of whether there, there just may be some differences there. What I'm gonna suggest, we have a public hearing that is scheduled and has been announced, and which will be on, do we know what the?
The second Monday.
The second Monday in October. So, we have time between now and then to really look at these documents and allow folks to draw attention to anything that they're concerned about, so that we can make sure that the intent of everyone who was involved in that process is really respected. So, I know there are some people here from the executive committees of the neighborhood associations who wanna share with us about some things that they've noticed already, and that that group will be meeting on Friday to review those documents further. I would like to schedule a work session in the council office at the table where we can spread all the documents out for sometime next week. And we may just have to talk about the best time for that, but we'll get that announced for everyone. So whoever's here who would like to talk with us about the comprehensive plan? Chris?
Yeah, is that going out like that, do you think, or is that just our monitor? Is, are we on it?
I don't know, maybe that struck my leg.
I can pass them down.
My name is Chris Nysley, and I'm in over the executive committees of the neighborhood associations. And as Debbie said, we've been working on reviewing the plans and want to commend the latest version, which I believe that the City Planning Commission worked a long time on, on making it more accessible, more easily read, and we, and we definitely agree that that's, that's happened. We've looked at this newest version that the City Planning Commission has approved, and have been reviewing that next to the plan that was approved by Pogomire. And on the cover page of this memo, what you'll see are two changes that we think are important to, to look at, probably above the others, and one of them is a text regarding existing vistas. And there may be language that's in the new plan that we, that we just haven't located. So Debbie, I appreciate the opportunity for all of us to meet next week to go through plans side by side. We've had a number of people doing this, but haven't found that yet. And then the other, the second point that we'd like to raise is for the coordination and accountability, the, some of the text on that, that we just think may need some clarifying or maybe some discussion about it, so that we better understand it. I think I can speak on behalf of the executive committees to say that we're all anxious and eager, as all of us are to see the comprehensive plan move forward. We're not in any way intending to delay it with these comments, but just hoping to further the discussion and wanting to make sure that what we end up with is, is a document, a plan that contains all of the elements we need to, so that City and Planning Commission can use it effectively. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Ed?
Edward Baum, 27 East Side Drive. I, too, like Chris Nysley, am pleased with the developments that have gone on in the plan in terms of their revisions made by the City Planning Commission. It does make it a much easier document to read. As she points out, there are some differences in between that and the Pogomire plan. But I do have a concern that the longer we put this off, it will become six years, and then maybe seven years and eight years before we have a plan. And my concern is that if we start looking at each word change and deciding whether or not that's an important change, we may end up with two plans, a plan adopted by the Planning Commission and the plan adopted by City Council. And according to city code, the comprehensive plan is one that is adopted both by the Planning Commission and the City Council. So, my recommendation is that changes that are significant, and this is always in the eye of the beholder, should be noted, but that the plan should be adopted as is, and any changes that need to be made may be made subsequently. A plan is a living document, it's not something carved in stone. In fact, I would note, and I've noted before, that the general recommendations on planning is that the plan should be completely looked at revised every five years. Well, we spent more than five years just developing the plan. Now that we're having a public forum in October, by the time we look at that, and we get around to adopting the plan, it may be November, which is getting close to six years before the, or when the process first started. I know several of you may recall that, I know Nancy does, and Paul does, Jim does, and others, Carol does. So, I hope that significant changes should be noted, but they should not be included in the plan that's adopted by council. The council should adopt what you have, and then proceed to making the changes after that.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak about the comprehensive plan at this time? I should also say that there was a question that went around on the email list about the, the language in the ordinance that says when it adopts the plan, it repeals all ordinances inconsistent therewith. And that just refers to places in the code that refer to the current comprehensive plan. It doesn't automatically implement all the recommended changes in the plan. It doesn't change all the codes in the city. It just repeals the references to older plans and makes this the plan that is referred to. So just to clarify that, that was a question that was bouncing around in email land. I'm gonna have to, what I would like to do to schedule this is email folks who were on the Steering Committee about this work session, to find the date that works for the most people, and then get that announced. So we'll get a press release sent out. I just wanna make sure we make it a time that's accessible to a lot of people.
I just wanted to ask if it would most likely be in the evening, or if you have any idea?
I would prefer daytime. Anybody else? Okay, well, stay tuned. We'll have some discussion about this between now and the public hearing, which is already scheduled. And we should keep it moving along. Okay, next on my agenda is a utility easement for the Hocking Valley Bank. This is a fifteen-foot wide easement for utilities. I have a, the, the drawing and the legal description of this. Did, I think everybody on Planning and Development got a copy of this. But it's basically where the work has already been done, on Palmer Street there, between Newtou and Hocking Valley Bank. So this is just granting an easement for the utilities to go under the road. I'll plan to bring that up for first reading.
I think they're already under the road, aren't they?
Yeah. If anybody else wants to look at that or wants a copy of it, I can get it to you before next week, but we should be reading that next Monday. Questions or comments about it? University Estates, the newly annexed area. One of the things we have to do is put it into a ward in the city. And looking at the ward map that exists, and my understanding is that we go ahead and designate a ward, and then at the next census, if there are people living there, then the lines end up being redrawn to deal with any changes in where population is in the city. But it looks like it's mostly adjacent to the first ward, and it seems to make sense to me that that's, that that's where we go.
Do we vote on this, is that it?
Also, and just to note that this first ward is actually the smallest as well. So if we were to pick a ward, the first ward is certainly, makes it adjacent also to the second ward, but the first ward.
Yep.
As reported by the Board of Elections.
Okay. So they had a precinct, I believe, is that how it goes?
Well, it doesn't really have any population yet, so I'm really not sure about the precincts.
Were there any, any other residents?
How many residences?
Residences that got?
Right now?
Well, that got annexed in with that, with the University of Estates?
None at the, oh, you mean the people living there?
There are four residents.
There are four people living there that I know of. I know there, there are two, there's at least one house occupied.
Right, two vote ups at least.
Maybe two.
No, I mean two vote ups.
And the ones on Armitage.
Mayor, do you have any more information?
None of the existing properties on Armitage were included within the annexation. So it's only the new areas, and I think two or three houses have been sold. I know one family that lives over there, so at this stage, I don't think it's gonna make too much of an impact. Of course, we are a year away from municipal elections anyway, so.
Question, are they allowed to build right now? I was confused.
Yes, for residential, for R1 homes, yes.
And that bond is sufficient for all the road work?
Not for all the repairs that need to be done now.
Okay, so it's not a sufficient bond?
That's right.
Okay.
But it's, it's the one that the, what their engineers provided to us is all the test compaction tests that were done each day and all of the different things. And says that's the only sections that are not done. Now, the maintenance bond, which comes when you get to the point of acceptance, would then cover all of those types of repairs. But the other thing is the reality that if your roads aren't in fairly good shape, your sales go down. And that's the big, you know, impetus to, to them, to, to keep those in better shape than they are right now. But right now, with the construction going on, those roads are just gonna be like Wood Oakmont. They're gonna get torn up some by bulldozers and in loaders and everything else. And now that you've got houses up there, you're gonna have the bigger, biggest terror upper of roads. The solid waste, carbon extract coming up through there.
Paul, do you know which precinct is just immediately adjacent to the river?
I thought it was two, but I actually, I think it overlaps with another one further to the south. North, I think, I don't know of hand. I thought they added, I, talking to Board of Elections, I thought they just added another precinct.
We just do it by wards, the Board of Elections will put it in the precincts.
Okay.
I think it's 1-4, though, they used to live on Union Street, and it goes all the way down.
Okay.
Union Street.
Well, 1-2 is, okay, yeah. I think it West State, I think it's 1-2.
Does, does that seem reasonable to everyone to include this in the first ward?
Yes.
I guess I'll do my best to represent them.
Next, we have a minor subdivision with variances on Hudson Avenue. And I attended the Planning Commission meeting where this was discussed, so. Do people have a copy of this, or should I pass this around? This is on, passing along this way, and then hopefully they'll get back the other way. This is on the end of Hudson Avenue, down close to the city garage, down at that end of Hudson Avenue. It currently is a single lot with two primary structures on it. There are two houses on a single lot. And in, and a property owner fairly recently combined those lots because they believed that one house was encroaching on the, the property line. So they made it into one lot. So this would re-divide those lots, so they, so that each house has its own separate lot, and the line is now clearly in between the houses, and there's no question about whether the house is on the lot line. Is that a fair description of what that is, Mayor Abel?
Pardon? That's in essence it, I think it, if there were two lots there before, and then I think at the most recent sale, the lot line was changed slightly, I think. But no one knew, 'cause no survey was made. So when we had requested the property owner to do the survey at the Planning Commission, they found, in fact, that it did need to move to sort of have the distance between the side yard setbacks.
Okay. Paul?
So is this, it's a proper size, I mean?
No.
It's forty by one thirty, so it's under the?
It's undersized.
Yeah, it requires variances, but there already are two houses there. It doesn't create any new building lots.
And, and the surrounding lots are similar in size. 'Cause that whole subdivision, when it was plotted way back, doesn't meet the current standard of, what is it, eight or nine thousand square feet?
Eight thousand, I think, yeah.
Right.
They're around five.
Right. So they, it wants to become its own subdivision?
No, it's a modification to an existing subdivision.
Oh, oh.
The subdivision was done probably in the thirties.
Oh, okay, so it's just being? It's moving a lot line? It's moving a lot line, so it becomes part of this subdivision? No?
It's part of a planned subdivision, so when you change the lot line, you have to technically modify the fifty-year-old subdivision. And that's just a language thing that's in there.
Okay.
And at the, at the current time, this shows that both are owned by one person. One, one person bought this and wants a subdivision.
Right.
And what are the, the variances are on, could you state those for us?
I gotta get the document back first.
It's a rule, though, that they can always build on any law of record.
Okay, the variances will permit creation of a lot with a width of forty-seven point six-four feet, where sixty-six feet is the permitted minimum. The lot area is gonna be six thousand one hundred and ninety-three point two square feet, where eight thousand square feet is the permitted minimum, and a right-side building setback of two and a half feet, more or less, where four point seven-six-four feet is the permitted minimum. And for the other lot, again, it's gonna be a narrower width. It's gonna be thirty-two point two-six feet, and sixty-six is the minimum. It's forty-two hundred square feet, where eight thousand is the minimum, and the depth to width ra, ratio is closer to four to one, instead of three to one. And again, a, a side setback of two and a half feet. So it's, there are lot size variances, but these are two existing houses.
These houses have been there for years, is that it?
Yes. So we'll bring this up for first reading next week?
So this means that perpetually, these smaller lots will be in that space?
These two. Yeah, it doesn't change anything else around it?
Right, 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 right.
Okay. Next, we have landmark rezoning. We have a memo from the Planning Commission dated July seventeenth recommending that we rezone the landmark property. It's currently an M-zone. Planning Commission voted four to zero to recommend that it be rezoned to an R-three. And the minutes from their meeting are attached.
Question. I thought there was gonna be, weren't there's discussion of business in there? Or are we just talking about the landmark lot itself?
Just the landmark lot itself.
Just the M-zone, okay.
Right.
And just, it resembles the, the rezoning that we did behind Hocking Valley Bank not very long ago. Where we took an M-zone, I mean, it's, that's one, the first thing I checked.
So there'll be no?
It was an island.
Manufacturing in that area?
It was the only manufacturing, other than on Elliot Street, where AVEX and Sunpower and such. That would be the only M in that area now.
So this really kind of smoothes the way for it to be residential?
Which is more in keeping with what the neighborhood is like now than when the zone was originally created?
And it was a real, it's burgling.
Right.
I get the impression, if my memory's correct, the Mill Street Plan, actually, was talking about trying to make this residential, wasn't it, at one time?
I think so.
And the comprehensive plan talks about the Mill Street area as residential, possibly higher-density residential? Okay, we'll go ahead and bring this up for first reading next week. The tax abatement repeal. Not too long ago, we reauthorized a tax abatement in the Uptown area where businesses that do renovations and get them approved by community design are eligible for an abatement on the value of the improvements. We have some information now stating that that was only allowed to be modified or renewed twice under Ohio law, and we have a recommendation from the Law Director, and Mayor Abel agrees, that we should probably repeal this. That we really were not supposed to extend it again.
So it's already been renewed twice?
It had already been renewed twice prior to this. And Ohio Department of Development wrote to the city discussing this, that we should not approve further tax exemptions until we get some confirmation from the Ohio Department of Development that we're able to go ahead and do that. And they attached a lot of information about community reinvestment areas. Do you wanna add anything to that?
I think well-covered.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so we'll read that next week. The Hampton Inn annexation. We are actually gonna wait until we get a zoning recommendation from the Planning Commission. We still have time within the waiting period, so we're gonna wait until we get that and read them both through together.
Right, and that's scheduled for a vote at the next Planning Commission meeting on the twenty-first? 'Cause it was optional for the planning, 'cause that's what we were checking out the last meeting, to have a public hearing. For council, it's not, you have to have it. We think since it's surrounded by B-three with the University Mall and restaurant right in front, et cetera, the B-three is the obvious designation for it. Plus, they're building a Hampton Inn there, so.
And the B-three is the appropriate zone for that?
Yes.
Mayor, have, have we straightened out the water tap question there?
Yes, they've, the Bennigan's have paid their water tap. And so, I think Hampton has too, so.
Okay, I remember you once were mentioning that.
They were a little late in their construction area, but it's been paid now.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a question, that's really just clarification from. So basically, the inn was built before that area was zoned appropriate for it?
Well, when it came, it's outside the city?
It's not in the city yet.
It's not in the city, oh, it's being annexed and then zoned?
We had?
Zoning and annexing.
Same night.
We have a development agreement with the developer of that property that was entered into saying that they would go ahead and get the property annexed and laying out all the agreements about utilities. So that was approved before the project really got underway.
But all along, we were thinking that that was appropriate?
Yeah.
Right, I just wanted to see the sequence of thinking there.
Yep, okay. Okay, the zoning code amendment penalty for violation, this is an item that Member Bain placed on the agenda.
I, I got your permission, though, right?
Yes. But you're doing the topic.
Well, I was concerned about the, about the five-hundred-dollar penalty, and I know the mayor told me just a few minutes ago that he's pursuing it with the judge, and you know, so that's a question. But the interpretation, so I went to my copy of Oxford's zoning code, which has been updated to something more like Akron's. But what it said is similar to ours. Specific penalty is not provided, she'll be guilty of a minor misdemeanor pursuant to the code. Each day continuance of a violation shall be considered a separate offense. The owner of any building or premises or part thereof, or anything in violation of this, the zoning code shall be placed or shall exist. Anyway, it goes on like that, I think I missed a word in there. Okay, and then I went and looked at Akron and Columbus, and I thought maybe I'd, we could ask, once we get our, our material sorted out, for a change, it's, the five-hundred will be convenient, I think, in the next year or so, but maybe in the future, we might wanna move in the direction of Akron, which has a first offense a hundred dollars. We'd probably apply it more often if we had a small, a lower offense. You know, I guess that's the trade-off. I think I can remember when we talked about raising it to five-hundred, that's why. You know, and then you go, if you're really a huge offender, then you get up to a thousand. And then down in Columbus, looking at penalties, and the two bigger ones are probably not really very comparable. Maybe charged with a separate misdemeanor of the third degree for each day a violation exists. So maybe just changing the word in our ordinance would help there, too, so we, if the filing fee is there. So I didn't know how imminent it was, and I did this research, but it's just more, maybe we'll ask the Planning Commission to consider these at some future point. But I think it's, it's, it seems like it's something that maybe council or maybe Planning Commission created, but maybe we need to alter it a little bit. But maybe with the new plan, if we could get it moving. We'll be able to have an upgraded zoning code, and that will be changed. But anyway, I'm gonna hold off on it for a while, despite putting it on the agenda.
Okay, in the interests of, of kind of clarifying things, I have another question. What kind of offenses does this cover?
If you would go in and knowingly violate the zoning code.
Okay.
So if you would change a, I mean, and it wouldn't necessarily have to be applied, but if you had a, a single-family house and you went in and changed it to a duplex?
Okay.
And so, and then?
Or built a manufacturing facility in an R-three?
Right, and sometimes it's ambiguous, and I think the city tends to work with, with people unless it's flagrant. So I'm gonna hold off on that one. But at the time I put it on the agenda, it seemed important.
Okay.
As with many things.
And if we wanted to ask the Planning Commission to consider this, we could just ask them, or we could?
Yeah.
Do a resolution and send this along, or?
I think the five-hundred may be in the future. I mean, a hundred is probably easier to slap on somebody, it's a slap on the wrist, maybe fine.
Well, it would seem that's a pretty flagrant and large violation of.
Right.
I mean, so.
That would be where the Planning Commission could go with it, though. But I just, it was at the point? Yeah. It just depends on your point of view. Okay, so at the time I put it on the agenda, it seemed important, it's lost importance, bottom line.
Nancy, if it was, if it went to a hundred dollars, we, we, it might be more apt to be. Yeah, but would it be worth it then?
I know.
See, that's the thing, it would be the exact same process.
Yeah.
But it would be for a hundred dollars.
What do you mean, the same process?
The, the legal process that it goes through with the lawyers.
Okay, so the expense of collecting it would be, you're saying, would be?
Prosecuting.
Prosecuting it would be way more than a hundred?
Expense for everybody, I mean, even the person that's being accused would have more in lawyer fees than would even come close to what they would have in the fee. I?
Well, it's not, I mean?
Yeah, I'm not sure that's in itself solves anything.
Yeah.
What's the current penalty for the violation?
Five hundred a day.
It is five hundred.
For each day.
A day.
For each day.
A maximum five hundred for each day.
So the judge still has the discretion to do lower than that?
To do lower than the five hundred?
Sure.
Yeah, and in this, and in these, it is set by council, and sometimes in separate ordinances. Sounds familiar, doesn't it?
But the surprise was that each day had to be filed as a separate case and go through the whole process all over again. That's?
Yeah.
It, it wasn't okay, there are fifty days of infraction here. We're going to give you a fine of, and a huge number. But rather, it was, if you want, you know, prosecution for more than one day, you must file each day as a separate case.
Yeah, and I think that's something that certainly someone might wanna ask other communities that apply it, if that's the way they do it, 'cause I don't, maybe our language requires it, but it doesn't seem like these would.
If there's something we could do to fix the language.
If there's something we could do to fix the language.
My understanding is that the judge that can then accept them as a package, but each one has to have a separate filing to go through. And then the judge decides whether or not they can be considered all at the same time, so it doesn't jam up the docket. so it doesn't jam up the docket, or if they indeed have to be separated out as separate cases. So there are a lot of ifs, and this is through our entire code. That's what concerns me about it.
Well, I agree, that's certainly something we want to do. And that is shocking to me. And my actual case that I... I know what you're talking about, Carol. And that's a case that has... I mean, I have people in the neighborhood saying, $40,000. You know, that's what they were thinking. But I was thinking about the one on Columbia, where the person had a garage and all of a sudden magically became an apartment in a single-family area. And then the question is, where do you go? And how do you monitor it, and that sort of thing? That one I was... Paul and I went down there once, just when we were working.
A garage to a...
Yeah, the garage. The garage apartment.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, some of these, like it involves like building on a property. That's a pretty expensive thing. So a $100 fine, you know, to me, whereas if it's a use that somebody, you know, maybe has a home office or starts to sell... You know, if it's kind of a service thing that happens, you know, that... You know, I think there are different levels of violation. But if somebody's going to build some expensive, you know, thing on the property, they can afford one of $100 to pay for their mistakes. But I think Carol's point is really useful to kind of understand the mechanics of this.
And maybe when we... Maybe the Planning Commission can consult with these and see how they do once we sort it out. But my case was the one I mentioned. All right, stopping right there.
So we'll come back to this.
Revisit it, yes.
Okay. The landscape ordinance. This agenda item refers to the amendment that was made about the size and shape of hills. And there was some language circulating on some email lists about the intent of the group that proposed that language to council to try to clarify. And I believe that Muriel Grimm is here to speak on behalf of the... This is the environmental committee that came out of the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee.
And you all should have copies of this.
Yeah.
Muriel Grimm, 24 Canterbury. Yeah, I'm more or less reporting to you and bringing up some things for your consideration tonight. The first thing is that we did hear a lot of concern about the amendment. Maybe confusion about what it meant or how to implement it. So what we are providing here, the first page is particularly the center paragraph, two paragraphs, is the intent of the amendment, which basically was meant, as it says there, to make sure that in planning to stabilize hillsides, the... Obviously, the best way to stabilize them is to level them so that you have to draw a line somewhere as to what will stabilize and what will remove it. So anyway, that basically was the concept, that there was no language in Title 27 which said anything about performing all these development techniques to stabilize and never said anything about retaining the original hills and valleys. It simply said, make sure that they're stabilized. So anyway, as I said, we're presenting this intent to you. And if there are... Is other wording? We have no complaints about changing our amendment to something else that would arrive at the same goals that were the intent of the amendment. Right now, it is the only thing we can come up with. Now, there were... The second part of this is that there were also concerns that general size and shape is too vague. I will point out that in Title 270202, it says, "All developments shall be planned and executed so as to avoid unnecessary earth-disturbing activity." I don't see unnecessary earth-disturbing activity as any less vague than general size and shape. So there are problems like that throughout all of the city code, I'm sure. What we have attempted to do is to put together some suggestions for how the Code Office could actually develop guidelines that they could use so that when they were looking at different plans, they could... They would have some standards to follow so that they wouldn't... So that they would keep consistency in their decisions. So what we did put together, as I said, is just suggestions as to how one could begin to develop these guidelines. And we are hoping that along... Working along these lines with these ideas that perhaps people in the Code Office who certainly... Or also perhaps Ray Hazlett, as the Service Safety Director, could also develop their own set of guidelines similar to the way that we're suggesting here.
I see you stressing the concept that these are guidelines. And I had Debbie make copies for the Black City Council. I think I need to collect the... Make an extra copy for Rick. So I hand him mine, or get him to the Planning Commission. I assume that will happen.
I'm not sure exactly... That, I guess, would be our next question. What exactly do we do with this? Since... Does the Planning Commission... Well, these are only suggestions as to how they should approach guidelines. But I don't know whether guidelines are simply developed within an office or a commission or something like that, or if they have to go through the Planning Commission first.
I would think that you could take these both to Steve and to the Chamber of Commerce. You were part of the committee that's working on the guide to the development process that the chamber is developing in collaboration with the city to try to help make the process more understandable to developers and to citizens. I mean, it seems like that would be a good place for this kind of discussion, to just try to, you know, help everybody understand what's going on in the ordinances.
Yeah, that does sound like a very good idea. Yeah, because that group is trying to put together.
Yeah, and there are some... There's been some initial work done on that. And the chamber's local government committee, I think, reviewed an early possible version of that. So might be possible to just try to circulate this a little bit and see if we find it helpful.
Yeah, as I said, none of these are really meant to be specific. It's just saying, basically, you could put together a set of guidelines like this. We didn't expect that they'd be using this mock-up.
And I'm aware of the... I attended some of these meetings, and I'm aware that there's various discussions with you when you start talking about carving and shaping hills. Do we talk about percentage? Do we talk about derivatives on the slope, et cetera? So what you're seeing here in terms of the diagrams is really the... Most clear we could think of at the time without trying to put numbers to it or trying to constrain it too much. I mean, we're trying to get to a common sense approach to this, so to speak, I think.
Common sense?
Yeah, I know. Uncommon.
Common sense is not common.
So this would mean that the... Now, wait, this goes to the Planning Commission? Or the... No, the Code Office?
Probably to the mayor.
To the mayor.
To whoever administers the law, I would think.
Excuse me?
I just thought that we're still talking.
Well, I was going to say, these seem to me to be fairly significant, you know, definitions and guidelines. And I guess it would be interesting to follow up and see what happens to them.
Right. This level of detail is probably more of an administrative purview part of the process. So I would view it as part of this discussion about how are we going to deal with this? And how do we make it understandable to people? I mean, I would encourage you to take this and discuss it with the mayor and with Steve and with the folks at the chamber that are creating this guide to the development process. I don't... I think this level of detail wouldn't really be appropriate to, like, consider amending ordinances. I think it's more suggestions and guidelines and trying to help increase understanding.
Exactly.
Anybody else? Paul?
So the thing to do is for us to read it and come up with better suggestions that we can think of. Amendments to this as well. Because this is part of the thing, is to perk up the dialogue on this and bring it forward.
And there was an earlier time, so a flowchart, I believe, that was used. I don't know if it's still in use, but it might be good to go back and take a look at that flowchart of how the ordinance would operate. If this, then that. Because I've seen it a couple of times. I might have recycled a couple of copies of it recently. I'll go back and check my papers.
That's part of what the chamber is working on. And they're working really closely with Steve. And there's been an initial meeting of a broader group of people to give some guidance to that. This was something that came out of the chamber's contract. We asked them to, as one of the deliverables for the city, to help create this guide to the development process and to include a variety of different groups in the community just to help clear things up. So I think there will be a flowchart and some little checklist questionnaires that go along with that to help people figure out what kind of project they're looking at. You know, if it's a subdivision or planned unit development and which other ordinances might get called into effect. Are they on a hillside? Are they in the floodplain? Those kind of questions. So I think this makes sense to be connected with that.
I'm sorry, I have one more question, and it's kind of blunt. I guess my question is, under guidelines like this, is it possible to build on a hill? I mean, in other words, that is my question, I guess.
It is possible to build small enough structures on a hill. If you want to build an exceedingly large structure, you know, Walmart-sized structure, it's virtually impossible.
Okay, thank you. Because, I mean, it seemed to me that the original ordinance said that the topography or the hills should be kept in a fairly, you know, natural state. So I was just wanting to understand, you know, in a nutshell, what this meant. Okay, thank you.
I have one miscellaneous, and I think we have some guests who may want to talk with us about some things as well. I can't find the piece of paper that was in... Here in this giant pile of papers a little bit ago. But there's a recommendation from the police chief, and it's the same recommendation that was made to us by the neighborhood associations a couple of years ago.
Assistant Carpenter and State?
About, yeah, doing away with the right turn on red when you're on State Street headed into town at Carpenter. So if you're coming from the Far East Side into town on State Street, currently, a right turn on red is allowed. But because of the island that has some landscaping in it, it's really difficult for people to see the oncoming traffic. So the neighborhood associations and now the police chief have recommended that we take one of two actions. Removing a lot of the landscaping or banning the right turn on red. Amy?
I actually had it on committee for tonight. But I'm glad you're taking care of it now. That's fine, that's fine. After I received that email, I then, you know, drove down there and just checked it out. Removing that landscaping would essentially do nothing for that area. It's not very tall at all. So I mean, it's, you know, probably this far up off the ground. So really, removing that wouldn't do much. I think it's that large retaining wall, really, that's affecting being able to see around or to see oncoming traffic. And there is, of course, that right... They have a green arrow that comes right there at that turn as well. And there's not a lot of traffic buildup there. So even if we were to do away with the right turn on red, it wouldn't necessarily do much. And it is very risky to make a right turn on red there.
I recall the police chief's language. He had actually had some people at the intersection and stuff, and he did measure the vegetation and thought it was too high. However, I think another very pressing reason for doing away with the right turn on red is the dangers of pedestrian crossing of Carpenter Street with the right turn on red there. It's very difficult for people to get across there. And I think we've heard testimony from individuals about that.
Got to be quick.
Quick.
I'm sorry, Amy, I thought this was a handy thing.
No, no, please don't apologize. It's fine.
So Frank's okay with bringing this forward next week?
As far as doing away with the right turn on red?
But the green arrow will persist, right? Yeah, before it gets up, the green arrow persists, but the turn on red when the green arrow and the green light is on.
It'll just say no, no turn on red. No turn on red.
Does anybody else wish to speak to us on this issue?
At 20 Sunnyside Drive, I make that turn once or twice a day, every day, except when I'm out of town. And I do notice a big difference between winter and summer. Winter, the ground cover is pretty low on that island. I have no problem at all seeing down. But when it grows up, it gets to the point... And I'm in a Honda, so kind of a low car to begin with. It does become a little bit difficult. I would rather personally see the landscaping trimmed a little bit so you can see around the corner rather than eliminate the ability to turn right on a red.
Deal with it, Ed. And I don't have any other miscellaneous items. Other people?
Just back to the landscaping. It seems to me like even if we eliminate the right on red, that we could still encourage the landscaping on that island to be low in nature. There are plenty of plants that, you know, they could keep it much lower than it is. I think that the grade of the intersection is also a factor.
Yeah.
But I... It makes sense to keep that low as well for everybody. Even the pedestrians that are crossing have difficulty seeing past the vegetation sometimes.
Just stop watering.
Okay.
So now Arts and Recreation, Carol? With toasters up?
What we noticed. Okay, Debbie Walker?
Do you want to take a few minutes to get your video thing sorted out? Were you struck by lightning?
So we're supposed to announce to people... We're supposed to announce to people that the video's having problems because there was a lightning strike, but the audio seems to be going out fine. So we're sorry for the bad picture quality. If you have any picture. We don't look this bad. Okay. Does anyone else have miscellaneous items for planning and development?
Arts and Recreation. The first topic is Stroud's Run. I bet you thought it was gone. What... All I am bringing up this evening is that the task force has met again with the state representatives and discussed some of the language that caused the tabling of the ordinances 59 and 60 a while back. And the actual agreement is going through a process of some rewording to eliminate the concerns. And to refresh your memory, the concerns were that the language sounded very much like the state wanted to maintain control of the park, although we would have ownership. And that was a concern. There was also, at one point, some language saying that if during the first year of ownership, that the deal was canceled, that we, the city, would return the $49,500 to the state that they forwarded us to begin the project. That is definitely changed. And what it says now is that if that $49,500 hasn't been spent, that the balance would be given back to them at that point. There also was a great deal of discussion concerning the management and that it was not the intention of ODNR to make it sound like they hoped to continue to manage. But that some of the language that was in there had to do with things like maintaining the stocking of the lake. And there are certain regulations that you must follow in order for that stocking to continue. So it was in their effort for us not to lose some things, some advantages that the park has. And currently, there is some discussion going on of some rewording. of some rewording to make it more comfortable, um, to everybody. So that the ODNR would be comfortable with the direction that the city was interested in going in and that the city would be comfortable with the agreement. Um, they, these, they being the state, ODNR, people seemed very anxious to make it okay with us. The ordinances themselves will remain unchanged, but the attached agreements will have some language change, which, um, you will be getting before it, it comes up again. And because of the changes in the agreements, it will require an amendment and go back to first reading, so there'll be ample time, uh, to discuss it. But I thought it was important that you understand what the holdup was, what the concerns were, and that over the course of the summer, that, uh, this has been discussed a great deal between, um, the ODNR officials and the mayor. And this is where we are. And there seemed to be just a, a great deal of, um, cooperation on both sides at this, um, task force meeting. And I know I left feeling much better about the whole situation. Um, it is hoped that within the next two weeks, we will have the new agreement to present to you and, uh, then move the ordinance forward. Uh, I see that Phil Cantino is here. Did you wish to speak?
No, I have his emails.
Okay, oh, okay. And are there other questions or things that you would like addressed as we go back into this? So you're thinking there.
I know, I'm thinking. Um, Jim?
If we had followed the original timetable, um, the city would be taking over about this time.
November first was the actual date.
So it seems unlikely that would happen. Um, any concept of when it might happen?
Um, actually, we would like to get this to occur before the election, which is the first week in November, so it might require a special.
Oh, I remember. I, I think, if I might add, what, what the people at the High Department of Natural Resources are saying is that once the election occurs, you know there's going to be a new governor. And therefore, then fairly soon, a transition team gets placed, and the state just basically shuts down. To let the transition team organize whomever the new board, you know, governor will be. So that sometime, assuming there's a clear-cut winner, I guess, uh, a transition team would come into being sometime maybe mid-November or so. And at that time, is when, if you've already got it done and it's being done, it continues right on. If it hasn't been done by then, you have to wait till the new team takes, gets in and start the whole process.
So our goal is to aim it November first.
Right. And, and that was the reasoning, that a change, um, in Columbus is going, you know, the new administration would have to start from scratch and looking at it. Um, council, any other questions or comments at this point? The next thing on the agenda is Halloween.
I don't have all that stuff with me from when we've discussed this before, so I may want to look back at my notes from our previous discussions. Uh, is there a time when we should have any comments to you to be, you know, involved in these negotiations?
If it's something concerning the agreements, um, very soon, because that agreement's kind of circulating among the task force for, um, comments. And if you go by your old agreement, I, I can tell you those two things. Uh, number seven in the agreement where there was language that was concerning, it was number seven that kind of shut us down, and the, the return of the forty-nine-five, uh, those things have been changed. Um, and that's the, that number seven is the focus of the, the changes.
We're in agreement on the forty-seven or forty-nine-five now. That's, that's been resolved.
We're just talking about...
Since the meeting Carol is at, we've sent one to ODNR, and they've sent another one back to us, and we're still doing that.
Right. I've printed a different agreement every day this week. That's why I didn't give you an agreement. There's no point, um, because, but it's down to just words, you know, how to make it comfortable. Oh, there was another thing. There are a couple of places it refers to, um, unless by special permit. In a couple of places, it says such and such must be done unless by special permit. Well, it turns out that we would grant, the city would grant those special permits. So it wasn't ODNR granting the special permits. It would be a self-administered, uh, process, which was huge to me as well, uh, because it, it did not imply that the state was hoping to maintain control while we had the ownership and the responsibility. Um, so hopefully, um, those things will, will move along. But if you can't find your copies, perhaps get new ones from Debbie, and, um, we can move forward and, and you can take another look at those things.
Probably the draft we did Thursday, because we have each page with a line number on it. Makes it much easier, so you can say page seven, line such and such is where I have my problem. And everybody knows exactly where you are. So I've, I've got that one, and I think Carol has a copy of that.
Would you like me just to email that to council then?
That'd be fine. That way, and it's dated.
Okay.
Uh, so at least you're at the same starting point as the committee, but we're...
How many pages?
Um, it's about eight pages. It's not...
Eight pages.
Yeah, not real long. Okay, I will do that. Um, the second item on the agenda is Halloween. I, I actually thought that some people from Clean and Safe Committee were coming this evening, but, uh, they must have decided to trust me to do a brilliant job of explaining to you where we are on Halloween. Um, the Clean and Safe Committee has met. Uh, they met last week at the, the library and, uh, had a very enthusiastic meeting, but Jenka attended as well, and, and it was great fun. Um, the, they are planning another meeting this Thursday at five o'clock at the city library. Or actually, it's the county library on Home Street in Athens. Um, that will be in the large conference room, and the purpose of the meeting is for people or groups who want to participate in any way to the positive, uh, entity of Halloween to attend and offer ideas. And the emphasis is on the students. We, we did have, uh, students express the idea that they wanted to be involved, that they had strong ideas. Amy and I have been talking about it a little. She's contacted, uh, student government. Um, and we want to get these groups together so that everyone's working towards similar goals. And a city official will, uh, be involved as well, so we know that the committee doesn't plan grandiose things that need to happen. Now, the time is at five o'clock. It will last till six-thirty at the library.
Can I just add one thing?
You may.
Okay. And, and, um, as Carol said, a lot of the discussion was, you know, ideas from student groups, that student, various clubs or groups could kind of come forward with some ideas for some interesting and positive events that they might even put on under the auspices of the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee and get some practice in event planning and, and really contribute to the pleasant experience of Halloween.
We do know that all of these groups have periodic projects, uh, community projects, and so we encourage many of the groups to adopt some phase of Halloween as their project for the fall. And, uh, we also have had some discussion of establishing a process to take donations, and there have been two suggestions specifically so far. One is to sponsor a porta potty, which the cost for that is approximately a hundred dollars. And, uh, you can have a little plaque saying, "A porta potty donated by this person or this business."
Adopt a potty.
Yeah, adopt a potty. And the other one is, uh, basically reticop. And, uh, that is because there's been discussion with the administration and the police department that it would be to our benefit to increase the size of the police presence that comes from out of town. And in order to do that, it would cost approximately a hundred and fifty dollars per officer. And we did, we have had people come forward and say, "I wouldn't mind donating money if I felt it was part of the safety." Well, both of these issues are health and safety issues, so if you would like to sponsor a porta potty or a, a officer for the streets, um, you can contact the mayor. Or, uh, actually, you can email me at, uh, the city, and, uh, we can start that process. Yes, Vajinkya?
Okay. Is it appropriate for city council to step forward and, um, sponsor a porta potty or two and a safety officer?
We do all of them as a special.
Well, yes, we always have.
Well, the city does them, right?
She means personally. She wants a Vajinkya pot.
That's good, go ahead and do it.
Okay. Well, I just thought that the city council itself had some... No way. All right, well, I will step forward and, and sponsor a porta potty.
Wow, that's cool. We have our first sponsors. Everybody else, Vajinkya is issuing a challenge here.
A challenge.
She wants everyone...
And not only people in city council, but community members can sponsor a safety officer or a porta potty. Meet the challenge.
Um, comments from council concerning anything you'd like to see included in this process?
No, my only comment is that I'm, I'm glad that you are making efforts to contact the student groups who were quite vocal at the end...
End of the year.
At the end of the year, um, and, and who, who had a lot of enthusiasm then. And I, I hope it's still there, we just maybe haven't seen it yet.
Right. They're just getting started and settled and, and, uh, but I do understand that there is some enthusiasm coming from the student senate and, and that they would like to very much be involved, so.
Yes. I just met with the president of student senate today. They're certainly more than ready to get involved as much as possible.
Anything else, Amy, on that?
I don't have any.
Anyone else on Halloween? Anyone from the audience would like to comment on Halloween or any of the, uh, related issues?
Just to mention that one of our appropriation discussions will be about some funding for those officers.
Right, right. And a way to accept donations, possibly, to cover that. So that will be legislation that's coming up.
What about, uh, you said that these are the two different ways to make donations. Can people just give less than that and that just be put forth?
Certainly, they can do that. And also, we already have had, um, people that have donated for the stages. That's been something that's been done for years, and we, we hope that isn't going to go away because that's an expense as well. So, uh, the, the actual, the bands and the, the stages and all of that process, um, is accustomed to go out and, and garnering financial support for that aspect as well. So these are just kind of add-on donation ideas.
Sorry, can I add one more thing?
Yes.
I have to say, I'm really impressed by the people who plan and work on Halloween. I mean, it's a huge event, and, you know, students could actually probably enjoy learning about, you know, how to stage large events from working with this committee, too. It's a really good opportunity.
Okay, again, that's the fourteenth, this Thursday, five o'clock, the library. Uh, the next thing on my agenda is the art market, and, um, I just wanted to tell you what has occurred. Uh, we did move the art market to East State Street where we, um, are going to, at least, at least for the time being, permanently be situated. And, uh, the way that the ordinance is worded, it allows for the mayor moving it if, uh, he sees, uh, that is, um, necessary or advisable. Um, what has really happened is the art market, art and farmer market, has combined with the retailers in that end of town and created quite a little festival on the first Sunday, uh, in the afternoon. And, uh, so there's a lot more going on than just the art market, and the retailers are very happy with it. And so, uh, we hope to continue that with activities for children. Uh, there's music and, um, the art vendors as well as the, as the stores being open. So it, it really has changed the nature of the event, and we're very happy with that. One thing that may come up in the near future, we have had a lot of discussions about the possibility of changing to the first Saturday instead of the first Sunday. I think that's something that we need to really think about and think what the implications are of closing the street down there on Saturday. Is it better? Is it worse? They feel that there are more, um, retailers open at that time, that there would be more foot traffic, and that it would be, it would grow, uh, faster if it were changed for the 'oh-seven season to the Saturdays. So it's something just to think about, how you think that would impact.
In terms of new location, was there any problem with the church traffic that comes through that area?
No, there were a few people that it took a little getting used to that the meters were bagged, and they had to go find a different place to park. But I had visited with the pastor before we did it. He attended the market, and, uh, they've been supportive. We agreed that we would never start music, uh, until twelve-thirty, so that they were completely finished with their, uh, services, and there wouldn't be any interference concerning that. Vajinkya?
Okay, if it were Saturday, would it interfere with the, I want to say, the real farmer's market? In other words, some of the vendors might be the same?
Very small amount, but that's part of what would have to be discussed, yes. That is one of the things that we're like, hmm. But the, the, the point of this was to establish something downtown.
Right.
And, and so perhaps with a time shift, that would not be problematic.
Yeah, cause I'm thinking, you know, a lot of the organic farmers, et cetera, might want to be on both markets.
The organic farmers have not been attending this market.
They have not.
It's been more, um, things like the, the man that makes jellies, um, things that are not immediately perishable, although John Nouse as well has been bringing baked goods.
Okay.
And so it's a little bit different, because what happened was, when we first started, we did have fresh produce, but the farmers were finding that they didn't, they couldn't grow that fast. You know, they, they, on good weekends, they sold out on Saturdays, so they had nothing to sell on Sunday. And so, uh, there were very few fresh produce people coming. It's been more flowers, cash and carry type things from the farmer's market.
Cause it would be nice to have veggies downtown.
It would.
I mean...
Well, sell it to the, go out to the farmer's market and talk to them and tell them to come to the Sunday market. Uh, anything else on the art market? Yes, Nancy?
Um, Carol, I think that some of the business owners on Court Street would be appalled on Sat- about Saturday's street closings, cause they gave me an earful concerning the, um, Cruze Inn, which I passed on to Amy. And, um, it was, they felt, several of them called and told me they felt that their business was really impaired by the street closing, because people just weren't going to go and, and walk, I mean, and park and come back. So I guess, I'm not sure that they're necessar- just like the Bronies thing, I'm not sure, there's a bit of division in the, in the, amongst the uptown people, so.
And I agree that there is division, that there's a lot to discuss. But the good news in terms of what we're talking about is the street that we are talking about closing, the retailers are right there with us. They're wanting to do it. And they all have experienced, well, what they said was the best sun, um, summer Sundays they've ever had were the days that the market was here. So they're, they're the ones instigating, "Let's close the street and do it." So it's a little bit different situation, but certainly, all of those questions need to be asked, investigated, and we've got to go to all of the businesses downtown and... to be asked, investigated, and we've got to go to all of the businesses downtown and get their take on it.
And how they, how they close the street, how the city chooses to close the street is possibly the most important question.
Right.
Because if they can go and take a tee at the first, at the last block of Court Street, then the problem is solved.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, I mean, but if that's the way it continues.
Yeah. The only thing that concerns me is if it grew a lot, we'd have a challenge to find...
Go to the Armory by then.
Where to grow. Well, yes, we've talked about that. Okay, anything else on the art market? And finally, my last thing, just a little update in terms of Arts West, unless the mayor wants to add something because he did mention that there would be some expenses coming forward because a gas line was broken in the construction of the bathroom. So you already have that? Okay, so you'll hear about that. And just my other comment about Arts West is they're really just now coming up to their first anniversary of full operation, and I think it's an opportunity for us to take a look at it, see where, where it is. It seems to be going very, very well and very active, and I think most of you have been to something there at one time or another. And if not, you need to come on down. Any questions about Arts West or anything that you would like for me to be pursuing in terms of that? If not, is there any miscellaneous, old committee members? Okay, if not?
Finance and personnel. First issue to deal with is our treasurer, Miriam McClure, has asked us to amend an ordinance from 2002, which extends, which increases the amount of money, checks actually, that she can hold out of deposit for 48 hours. In 2002, we passed an ordinance that followed a revision in the Ohio Revised Code that allowed city treasurers to extend the deposit period to 48 hours for checks totaling no more than $500. The Ohio Revised Code has been amended again to allow that 48-hour hold for checks up to $1,000, which is a fairly commonly received amount in the city. And at this time, the treasurer is making all the deposits herself, and this would make things a lot easier for her and any designee that she can encourage to do that for her. So if it's okay, we'll bring it forward, and the treasurer will be here next Monday to answer any questions about it.
And this puts us in congruency with the Ohio Revised Code?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And at second reading, we might need to suspend it because the treasurer is actually going to be out of town, and this will need to happen probably in October, yeah, so, just to let you know. Some miscellaneous appropriations. Carol mentioned Arts West, that there was some work being done with regards to...
Gas line, chiller?
A water line, I believe.
Yeah.
Sewer line.
Sewer line.
And accidentally, they nicked a gas line, which needed to be replaced immediately, of course.
No doubt.
And that bill is about $2,000. The mayor suggests that we just pay that from the capital expense fund, since Arts West at this time doesn't have funding that of its own.
Good question. Always bring us?
Shouldn't the one who nicked it pay for it?
It's the water department.
I think it was, I think it was us.
It was us.
You met the enemy.
We haven't, yes.
It's the water department.
It was us.
Sewer department.
Sewer department should come out of there.
So, you know...
Have the capital.
It happens.
So, do we have money in capital, I assume?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, okay.
It's princely, but we have some.
Okay.
It's probably a princely amount.
Okay.
Second issue is the police chief has asked us to move some, some funds around which will allow him to pay a very large increase in overtime that has occurred this year, over $60,000 already. We have to remember that we've, the mayor has recently hired three new officers. Until that time, force has been down, and so they've been, officers have been covering with overtime. These new officers are undergoing training and are actually in the city, working with officers, but they're not at a point where they can go out on their own yet. So soon, that, that will happen. We also have one or two officers off, on military now.
Two.
Two. So the force is down, there's increased overtime. What the police chief has asked, and I don't have his memo in front of me, to decrease one fund by $62,000, that's the overtime and command pay, increase that. At the same time, decrease his, another fund, and I'm sorry, I don't know what that is.
Just a 200 and 300 series. Supplies and services.
Okay.
He thinks he can do a cost savings there with about $15,000 between now and the end of the year to help pay for that increased overtime.
So we would be net, our net increase would be about $47,000.
This comes from the general fund, I see?
Yes.
Okay. Transactional classes as well.
So I, I hope I explained the reasoning for that.
So are we up to full staff now, as we authorize?
We will, yes. As these three officers come on full duty, we will be at full, fully authorized staffing.
Even with the two in service, though?
Correct.
No. I mean...
They are, they are part of our force.
Right. But they're not...
But they're still, we're, we increased the force by one lieutenant, and one of the people on military duty is a lieutenant. And then we have them on paper, because there's one paper there, but the budgeted people plus another officer that wasn't in the original budget is there. But I have to count the two officers that are gone in the staffing levels, and so right now, there's no staffing level to hire an additional officer.
Right, what I'm saying is like, we have a total, we have a certain number of officers.
Sure.
And, and we're at full complement, however, two of them are...
On military leave.
On military leave, so we basically have two bodies, two...
Military duty.
We, we don't have as many bodies as we have positions.
Are we actually down one?
Right, right, exactly.
We're actually down one because we increased the lieutenants?
We're actually down one in the patrol officer because we did, one of those, you're right, Nancy, was in lieutenant's area.
So it's not, it's bad, but it's not as bad.
Right.
Okay, so that needs to be put up for next ordinance, next reading. Okay. And Paul, you had a couple things you wanted to talk about.
Oh, okay, I wanted to cover the parking enforcement stuff and the middle school project. From what I understand, we need to increase the middle school project fund by about, if I'm reading correctly, 11,000, is that what I'm seeing here, 12?
It was 11,850, we're just around the 12.
Okay. And this is because of extra change orders and dirt in terms of a base, fixing the base?
There's a depth repair in the first block of High Street, which ate up about $8,000. Then there was, I think, just a miscalculation, and I think, well, never mind. But there's just more topsoil and dirt, but there was a little bit more of different materials, and we'd gone into this with a $12,000 contingency and wound up spending 23. So I got 11,800 and some dollar deficit right now.
Okay, so that's what we have to do, we have to increase that fund by that much. This will come out of what?
572 Street Rehab, which was our local matchmaker, I'm running for the issue two.
Okay, so we'll put that up as ordinance, I guess?
Yes.
We need to do that, okay. Parking enforcement fund, this is an increase of 18,700. This is for the contract. I guess the guy's doing good billing. The, this is for the tickets, parking tickets, I understand?
Yes, as of...
And the meters, I think, is that what I'm hearing here?
Right, there's, you want me to see this? As of the end of August, we've collected in parking fines, $284,000, which is 85% of the revenue. So it looks like we're going to exceed that, and we pay the billing agent for us a percentage of collection. We budgeted 50, I need 10 more because revenue's better than I thought it was, which is good. The other is that we have 71 Type S meters that have a spring load on it. Those are starting to go bad, you can only buy it by the case. I don't need 2,000 spring loads for 71 of them. It costs $122.50 to get a new digital, which operates on battery and you don't have to go wind and everything. So for that, $8,700, it's, we want, we were trying to replace, if you do the math, that won't work out because I'd already budgeted 7,000 or 8,000 to do normal replacement this year. It just accelerates the replacements, so that this will be the end of all the spring-loaded type in the city, so we're finishing that replacement early.
Okay, so that will be up and...
I'll have about 71 old, or more than that, old meters, and if you want one without a spring load, then buy it, we can, we can make a deal.
We should give some to the various city council members who've received a lot of tickets.
Yeah, somebody's got a lot of tickets, wants to have, you know, their own meter. Perfect gift for a graduate senior. I mean, come see us, we'll, we'll, sales will be open. Maybe we can get the senior class that owe you to sell this as a product. I mean, make a little few dollars.
And actually, I, I will miss twisting that spring and hearing, hearing the money go in and start clicking, start kicking away. Now it just...
And pound on it, the dust.
Now it just falls into the...
And sometimes doesn't go up.
I know, some of them don't give you any minutes, doesn't it?
Okay, so that'll be up for ordinance as well. Anything else?
I have one more. So actually, as, as the mayor pointed out, the increased fees for the, for the contract you're arguing because of a good thing, they're collecting more money than we anticipated. Finally, Carol alluded to some, some possibility of some costs involved for encouraging officers from out of town who in the past have volunteered to help with Halloween, both Friday night and Saturday night. Those volunteers have been falling off over the past few years, and they really serve a very important purpose in the staffing for, for Halloween. So the proposal is that the city would pay $150 to an officer for a shift, an eight-hour shift, whether it was on a Friday night or Saturday night. And so the estimate is that we would pay for probably 50 shifts at $150. So that's about $7,500. And so this would be paid out of the tourism fund, so we need to increase the tourism fund by that $7,500 plus approximately another $7,000 would pay for the trash pickup to the solid waste district, the porta john rentals, meals, stage generators, et cetera, et cetera, food for the workers that we, we all come up here and eat. So that would be 14, what the mayor has estimated at $14,400. Increasing the tourism fund because, again, as Carol points out, the tourism fund can accept donations. So if we...
If you put it in the...
If we put this money into the tourism fund, it can be, those expenses can be defrayed as we receive donations.
And then can we get back out of it?
Yeah, we can, if there's a, if there's a, if there's a surplus at the end of the accounting period, then it can go back for something else. So the, the real change is this concept of compensating the officers who come to us from other cities. And it's something new, is any questions or concerns about that?
I guess two, one is a question about, some of those things are things that we've paid for in the past, and I don't know what fund we've taken that money out of when we pay for the food. We did take it out of tourism?
Yeah, it's been tourism.
It's been appropriated, I'm surprised it wasn't appropriated this year.
There, there was 7,000 appropriated, our, my total budget's 21,700.
Some has.
But I took everything that we have paid in previous years for when we contract with outside vendors, put it all into the tourism for the simplicity of, if this effort continues, we want it not scattered in different funds, but in one place, and then hopefully the fundraising is successful.
And then the, the money that comes in from the vending fees and other sources also go in?
Right, I think that's what, we're going to have to look at the ordinance that we have, like when we do the vending fees and say, let's modify that to change that to receipt to the tourism fund because that's where we get the, it helps pay the code officers, but it also, it pays for the generator, for example, that, that we're selling power out of. And so it would put it all in there, and I don't think it'll start making a profit anytime soon at 21,000 worth of expenses that are just non-salary overtime to our people that are expenses to us.
And the other question about paying officers that come to us from other places is that, it's my understanding that some departments view this as training for their officers in, you know, a situation that, you know, they may not encounter on a regular basis as we do here in Athens.
Yeah.
And I don't, does that figure into that?
Well, that's not saying we won't accept volunteers. I mean, when we say that we want to hire, that means we're selective. We're going to be going out to departments that we've worked with in the past that are full-time officers, not auxiliary police officers from some other county, not a village council, I'm not depriving them, but I mean, not a village council that's not used to full-time police work. We're, we're going to select, and in probably 20 to 25 of these because of the shifting, you add both shifts together, it's going to be the mountain. And mountain reimbursement is also in there from a standing point of mileage and provision of food while they're here. But that's two nights, and so that's why we are at 50, because really, if you take malice, you get 12 to 15 malice, use 15, that's 30, so you have, really only puts 20 additional officers on the street about what we have, which is still manageable. And then we will still accept volunteers, you know, that, that want to help, but, and we'll put those with those teams. And it is a new concept for us, we're, we're, you know, we don't want to run the risk of not having good qualified officers here and having a big crowd and not protecting everybody that's at the event. Yes, Paul?
So how much has the volunteer offices gone down? I mean, that this is, okay, I'm looking and saying, okay, if we offer money, I, I, you know, I would rather get the money than be a volunteer, so I see a further depression of the volunteers, and I'm just wondering how far it's gone down now.
Well, I think it's, I, I don't have those in front of me that I think that of full-time, I mean, what's, where we're having the difficulty is, let's say you're talking to Logan or Gally County Sheriff or Washington County Sheriff, you really don't know until the last minute who the heck, how many people are going to show up, so it makes it difficult to plan. So therefore, you know, when we look at it that way, and in our discussions, because we start recruiting for this like in May, and you start calling departments and, you know, can they, and, and we're just getting more resistance, saying, well, I don't know, my budget's real tight this year. And so you're not getting definitive answers. We felt this was a solution because of, you know, and part of this is because of the, the groups that have been coming forward and saying, tell me what you want me to do. Well, this is one of the things that, you know, when Carol and I met the Well, this is one of the things that, you know, when Carol and I met the other, this is a way to try to fund most of this, is to get folks to sponsor it. They can see that, and they can understand the impact an additional trained officer, full-time officer from another department's really going to help.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it's important to pay the officers. I mean, it might be fun to, to be a part of the party, but I mean, it is a job. Security is a professional job.
It is.
So I would, you know, I think it seems only fair to pay people for this kind of work, professionals to do their professional jobs.
Okay, I have two questions. First of all, we could make a line in there so all the money that's collected goes into it, and we could use it for next year, right? A Halloween line, couldn't we?
Sure, we can.
I mean, why, and that way then it won't be lost.
I can't talk on behalf of the auditor, but I'm sure.
Because, you know, we used to have, we used to have those tourism grants, and we had a special line and-
Right, and so we would just create one that would be Halloween expenditures and revenue.
Yeah.
And we'd dump everything that we get revenue in. I think we'll just have to make, we might, maybe we could do it in the one ordinance and just reference the vending fees should be now received into that. Would probably be sufficient.
That way we'll know what we're getting and what, you know, how we're done.
You'd see exactly at a glance what, this is how much money we took in and deposited, and wouldn't take in the court costs and all the other things. But we could ask the court for documentation on that.
Okay, so then my second question's a little bit more general. How much does it cost to have a mounted officer here for two days roughly? Oats and everything, cleaning up the horse dew and, well, maybe they don't do that.
They don't do that. We have sanitation, some of our sanitation people do that. Because you usually have two people in that vehicle that go to the various places around for them. So that's been buried in our overtime cost in the sewer department. And then in addition, that would cost us, it was eighteen hundred and nine dollars and five cents for mileage last year, and seven hundred and fifty dollars for meals and stall rental and cleanup at the fairgrounds. Because we hire the four-H Golden Gates Club to do that, because it's a fundraiser for them. And we just contracted a flat amount for that.
So, and that's thirty-six hundred roughly, if you add those two together, for how many, how many?
We usually, with, we have our own four, and then we usually vary anywhere from twelve to fifteen.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Now that you're, we'll probably-
Like salaries.
Set an amount that we want, because what we try to do is to break down into teams of four or five each, with one of our officers being in each team. And we'll probably go with five in each team and just try to do, you know, fifteen extra officers or so, or four, fifteen.
I just wanted to know roughly how much more is left from outside.
So we'll put that up and discuss it further.
And also the change, so that the-
Yes.
We can track the money?
Yes. Okay, that's, unless we have any miscellaneous, the auditor, mayor? Paul?
I saw a note on your sheet here that you gave something about a staffing change. Is that something we have to deal with?
No, we're not ready to talk about that. It's not ready to go yet. And that, the end of this?
City Serv-, City Services Committee, I have an update. At the end of July, I talked to Teresa Carter, and she, we were talking about the alarm system problem, about false alarms. Those of you who are listening at the storm start know that we had some alarms, false alarms going on, lots of moving vehicles that probably ended up with nothing to, no fire to fight. So we devised a system, or I didn't. I asked for the people that had selected to do it, and we talked to the fire chief. And I guess next week sometime Debbie is going to arrange a meeting, and I will talk to both chiefs and Steve and see. It's, it's like taxicab system redo. I just wanted you to know that we are trying, I am trying to do it.
Yeah, well, this also includes dealing with panic buttons? Because I know there's another proposal now for-
The police chief is there, and he is going to be talking about that, I guess.
Okay, great.
Yes, I just said they could figure it out and tell me what they want, but I have to go, I guess.
Is this for domestic alarm, residential alarm system situations?
No, we're going to, we're going to get rid of the, that charge that we have that is not, where we don't do anything as well. That was where I started, and then, okay, all right. Wellhead Protection, I'm going to turn it over to Carol. There's, we're talking about a contract, right? Did you want an update?
Right, just in terms of an update. Last spring, we had Donna Goodman and Scott Kester come to the Wellhead Protection Task Force meeting and talked about where do we go from here, what's the next step, and so on. That meeting ended with, well, you need to have a person in charge before we can move forward. Because the meeting kind of ended with everybody saying, I don't know, do you do that? I don't know, do you do that? And, and so it was very clear that we needed to kind of nail down the organizational structure of the Wellhead Enforcement and Education. What has happened since then is the mayor has spoken with Nick Carr. Nick Carr has taken, stepped up to the plate in terms of taking responsibility, working with Crystal. And they are putting together a proposal to bring to us concerning Scott Hamer, Hammer at the County Health Department.
City County. We're part of it.
That they could take over the more technical parts of the process. And we got a memo saying that that would be approximately thirty to thirty-five dollars an hour, which worked out to about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And I, I think that this is a possibility. I do look forward to their actual proposal to take a look at it. There are other things that we could contemplate, but I, I think that if we are going to, we need to contemplate pretty quickly and kind of sit down with them and, and talk about the possibilities. But it's been suggested to me by the EPA that we consider putting out a request for a retired EPA-type person that would contract for a part-time position. And I, I know that in talking to Donna Goodman, she feels that those people are out there that would do it on a part-time basis, would not have to have benefits because they have retirement benefits from the EPA, and that that might be another route to go. So I'm just putting that out there as, you know, this isn't a done deal. It's a, a part of a discussion. But we will be looking forward to what Nick Carr brings to us in the next month. And once we get something kind of nailed down, then the EPA is just waiting to hear from us, and they will put on a workshop for impacted businesses, for residents in the Wellhead Protection area. But before they did that, they wanted to have it clear what our structure was so people would know who to go to for questions, who to go to for enforcement processes, and, and all of it. So that's where we are. So kind of stay tuned for progress.
Okay, any questions?
Sooner than, rather than later, I hope.
Yeah, I was, I actually asked Steve in the middle of summer too for a list of all the different actions that took place in the Wellhead Protection area, and I was pretty surprised at how many things had gone on. And I guess one of the things that I would really like to know was when they would be involved. I do think that even though, and I talked to Carol about this at one of our picnics over on Saturday, and one of the questions that I have is, well, you know, you get all these bright shiny new people out of the industrial hygiene program at OU who then move on to bigger and better things after two years. But they certainly do have the best, most up-to-date information. So my trade-offs were, I much prefer that to people who were maybe French majors in college and worked for the EPA, who haven't had the organic chemistry degree. I mean, the recent stuff. You know, that's basically where, but you know, somewhere between those two, maybe we can find one with both, who knows? But they, but we'll, I'm sure Carol will bring it back under my committee or her own on this. Okay, my next item is a smoke detector question. And actually, I'm sorry that Ed left, because this should be the Ed bomb time. Because Ed really worked through the smoke detector requirement. I mean, there were some rocky times. So if you think the notification list is rocky, you can go back and look at any of those too. But my own personal opinion, I'm reading John Hunt's article, my own personal experience, I should say, made me kind of say that the fine art of hardwired and ten-year smoke detectors is still in a state of flux. My own personal experience is, I have two hardwired smoke detectors in the apartment that Amy rents. And we found, and it's a ten-year smoke detector. The ones I had before, when I first bought my house, were thirty years. They last for all that time. Here's ten years. That means that sometimes they're going to go critical at eight years. And the one in the place where Amy is currently living started chirping at three years. And there was no way to understand what was going on. I thought, I'm going to have to go and find out from the electrician how to replace it. Well, then I pulled out the, the materials that came with it, you know, when all else fails, read the directions. And you, I found out that there was a battery to replace. And so all of these ten-year things, the small battery, and I'm sure Amy isn't using it in her iPod, so I'm not worried about it. But it's, the question is, any of those detectors, since it's an evolving art form, may have requirements. One of them was zinc, one wasn't. They're all backups. The new ones don't have backups. Some will go critical earlier than later. I mean, there is no one-size-fits-all. And so they will chirp even at three years, and they will need that battery replaced. So I think it's, those of you out there in TV land who are thinking those battery, those smoke detectors aren't working, you better read the instructions, if you still have them. Because my experience was that it's much more complex than it used to be, which is put it up and watch it for twenty-five years and it works fine. All right, that's my little public information thing. The other item I have is from Crystal, who asks that we give money for the repair of water well number nineteen. They have this water well problem. The casing joints are in poor condition, and formation materials are allowed to enter the well, not something we want. So for about thirty-three thousand, we can bring the well up to date. My recollection is that that would be a fraction of what it would cost to dig a new well. So I would like if my committee is fine with this, to bring it forward. Okay?
And Nancy, I believe that nineteen is not-
Nineteen A, nineteen A, I'm sorry. Did I say nineteen A?
You said nineteen, but it's nineteen A.
Nineteen A is not a, a major producer, it's more of a backup. But we, we do need it. I'm not saying we don't need it, I just-
That was what I asked the mayor, and he said producers five hundred.
Yeah, like it's a, you know, a crisis that-
But we want it done, we just, and he said there's a demand for water. This will be something to do, and it's a fraction.
It's really what we use when there is a high demand, i.e. a fire. Or you've got a major water line break and you got to refill a tank. You have to be able to have that capacity in reserve to start pumping more full-time, get it all through the plant, and replenish what's being used either through a major break or through a major fire. It just gives you a little better safety margin. But for normal day-to-day operations, you can do without it, but you don't plan that. Well, you plan for the emergency, not for the normal day.
And this is Armitage, right? This is in Armitage?
I'm, I'm not sure. I'd have to check.
Well, I know the low numbers are in the J C.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought the high one was at Armitage.
In Armitage, I think it's Armitage.
I think it is, but I'm, I'm not, I, I won't swear to it. I want to check my information.
Yeah, if it were in the, by the medical center, I think, twice, but I assumed it was Armitage by the number.
No, those are low capacity.
Yeah, so.
I'd rather build new wells and abandon those.
Maybe, I think that, we keep them there. I think that for a while, the concept that you expressed, or someone did, was that they're there in case we need them, but they're awfully fragile.
Okay, I, I of course want to spend money on clean drinking water. But I'm just curious, because we've, you know, addressed certain economic needs for Arts West and everything. So how is our, how's our money? I mean, we, we have the money to do these things, right? It's not going to be a hardship on some other area.
Not in the water line. I think what we're doing, as you recall, earlier this summer, we have a roughly six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project down Columbus Road from Second Street. That's, we have about half the cash to do that. We're going to borrow half, but then we've got the, the last EPA note gets paid off January one. And that'll free up seventy thousand dollars per year to help pay that off. It leaves us a three-hundred-and-some-thousand-dollar balance in the fund. So it's not unreasonable. I'd like, I always like to have two fifty to three hundred to the, three fifty or so in case an emergency comes up.
Right, right. Okay. Great, thanks.
All right, I have no miscellaneous. I don't want to open the can of worms about the notification document right now.
Yeah, all right, transification. First item on the agenda is the Stewart Street sidewalks. And I believe everybody is in receipt of the engineering estimates from RJM. Quick overview is with engineering and the construction, total cost of the project is going to be approximately fifty-three thousand. Now also keep in mind that the city will be assessing the property owners for said construction. And as I discussed with the auditor, wherever I put my notes, as of July two thousand and six, the unappropriated balance for the street rehab is two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand and change. So the next step would be to appropriate this money, or?
We've never used street rehab for sidewalk replacement.
Well, can we move the, that money to the street rehab?
I think-
I thought Ohio Avenue.
Or curb and sidewalk.
Lincoln, didn't we use street fund?
I think we used street funds in that. Actually, I thought the reason why we would love to talk about design and engineering so we could assess the property owners for-
Right, that was the idea. Well, I think that there are a couple of things here that the curbs, as you, you were on these assessment equalization, the curbs, the intersection, the ADA ramps are all city expenses, but I think everything else would be the property owners. And that's part of, you know, I had some questions that I had sent over to RJM. And I think they were, they were talking in the range of five thousand dollars for the, for the curbs and some of the other things. But I don't have a, a final back from him on it, but I know council's been wanting this, so I forwarded on to Amy. But, because I thought part of his- Yeah, this was preparation of construction, I mean, I'll have to ask him, because that's one of the things that's not there, is by segment of property ownership, what would be the cost? That would be theirs. And then if they did not, yeah, you, you have to go through an assessment equalization board.
Okay, looking at this, it's fairly pricey, and, you know.
It's engineering. I mean, thirty-eight thousand, I think, for the construction.
Yeah, and the rest is really thirteen for design. I guess the question we want to do is, I guess Amy's asking us what the next step is. Do we pay for the design so we can actually do the resolution for assessment? I think is one of the questions I'm hearing. Do we want to start seeing how we divide this up? Is there, is there a third way of doing it? In terms of, if you start looking at this, I'm sure the property owners will realize it's a chunk of change that we're, we're moving towards assessing them with. Maybe a conversation with them, saying, can you do it on your own, would be something of interest. I guess I'm asking for suggestions as well. I look at this and saying, we can move ahead with this. We can appropriate, what, thirteen thousand for design? We can set up a resolution to go forward and assess the property owners, and then get ready for next year, I guess, at this rate. Because we'll have to do an assessment.
Isn't thirteen thousand a tad high?
I would think so too, but if we're, I'm not worried if we're going to assess the property owners more.
Not for design.
Yeah, but if the equalization board gives it back to us, and-
Yes.
Guess what? I think thirteen is a bit.
Bajinka?
Well, I just noticed here that it says a thirty-inch diameter tree would need to be removed. That's a pretty significant-
That's a maple, I think.
Tree.
It's a big tree.
And probably a beautiful tree.
Can you go around it?
I know, I talked to Ray about it on Saturday.
Thank you.
Yeah, as far as, as far as going around the tree.
Is it possible?
I know that, yeah.
Oh, good.
I know that is one of the stipulations, I guess.
Yeah, we'd be out of the right of way going around the tree is one of the issues. And I think one of it was, I'd have to look at it again to be sure, but I think we're going through a porch if we go around the tree.
It's the, well, that's all right.
Is it the tree right there on the edge of that parking lot?
It's right there near Union's-
Way where it almost dead ends into-
Dead ends or almost where you walk across from Lakeview and then down to the next, to Millie. Somewhere in between there, I think, is where it is. Because the sidewalk- Because the sidewalk all the way on, on the west side of the street. So it's gotta be in the new side. And I'm thinking it's down toward Jefferson Hill.
I think you're right. It's right there on the corner where Justice.
I think there's a piece missing on the west side too.
About Pentagon?
Fifty-six, I think it is. I went down there and there's gas missing on both sides.
There's some pretty deteriorated ones there. Most of them, as they're rehabbed, are pretty good shape. But there are a couple there, including the university's parking lot, that aren't in too good a shape.
So I have a question. If, in terms of procedure, if we're doing new sidewalks, we can do an assessment in theory. If we're doing repair, do we actually just tell them to repair it? Or do we need specs to ask them to repair it?
We can say to them to repair it. And if they do what our, and if they do, then we have a standard price for curb replacement that we would reimburse them for, not to exceed. I mean, if they get somebody to do it less expensively, but still the specifications, we'll pay that contractor directly up to a maximum amount per linear foot. And that comes out of the street fund budget.
Okay.
So does this go out to bid? In other words...
If it's over twenty-five thousand dollars for construction, it has to go to bid.
Okay. So have we already paid the thirteen thousand for design?
No, we're just asking for an estimate.
Okay. That's an estimate of design.
Right.
All right, so that went out to bid.
I'm sure I'll probably get billed for that too.
Okay, but I was gonna say, does that go out to bid? And these are the only people who responded? And they said it was thirteen thousand for design?
No, what we do on consulting-type contracts or services is periodically we go out to engineering firms, like in this, say, give us a request for qualifications. They have to meet our criteria, then we have a list of qualified engineering firms to do, to do business with. And this is one of those. We typically, in any year, will probably use for, at least four. I think right now we're using five different engineering firms for different jobs. RJM was one. Burgess and Neppel, obviously, because they've done a lot of work for us. But it's the one in Worcester. Engineering Associates has done one, RJM, but we used a new one that just got on our bidding list and then we've all...
So we selected them to give us this?
We get a, we get five to seven of these applicants. If they all meet them, then we try each individual project that comes up. We will, depending upon the dollar amount, we'll say, like, for the engineering design of Union's fifty-six, six-eighty-two, we asked, we asked for proposals from a lot of the firms that were on our approved list. Four of them or five actually submitted them specifically for that. Andy Stone reviewed them and selected the engineering firm that he wanted to use. In that instance, they had to be ODOT pre-qualified also.
Okay, but I just wondered if we had other proposals for the design phase of this?
This one was small enough that, I mean, I'm not gonna get usually a firm out of Worcester, Ohio, or Columbus, et cetera, to come down here and do a thirty-eight-thousand-dollar project. The travel alone would eat us alive. So we always try to have at least one local engineering firm. This is it. And so that's why I just went directly to him to say, give me a proposal on this.
Paul, go ahead.
Okay, so the way I'm seeing it right now is that we either contract for the design, which will cost us thirteen thousand.
Well, that, no, with this up through design...
Field of services, let's see. Field survey, engineer, Zara?
You could cut down a small amount by the contract big specification book. You didn't have to go quite that far. And he wants a thousand above the thirteen-five for, if you then want him to inspect the work as it's being done. But what he's done is that he's estimated senior engineer and project engineer at two different rates, plus supplies. And that one of the big, you know, one of the expenses in here is twenty-eight hundred dollars for field survey work, which is contracted out by him in most cases. Because we gotta know exactly where the right-of-way is.
Okay, so really, it's the choice we're having right now is whether we wanna spend the money on design. Is that it?
Realistically, all you're gonna, yeah, enter into contract for this year is design. Because there's no way you're gonna get this all-designed bid and under construction by February fif, or December fifteenth. I just don't see that happening that quickly. I don't think you're gonna pour it in the middle of winter quarter anyway. You're really looking for spring to do the work. And then you maybe even wanna say, do we wanna do this in June? As a summer project, because we're gonna allow less pedestrian, and that's the major emphasis of it. Do you really wanna put construction crews in there with your highest? So if you're scheduling that way, you can really look and say, okay, if you have more questions based upon reading this, please let me know. I can get down and talk with the engineer. Because I had three or four questions for him.
Okay. I would rather try to think of something else. And I say that because really what I wanna sidewalk there, either repair the present sidewalk, which probably doesn't require design.
No, it doesn't.
Okay. Which to my mind means, yeah, if I read the code correctly, the code office says, do this in fifteen days or we'll do it and charge you. If I understand the way the code does that, it's in the city code, that's a cheaper way of doing it from my point of view right now.
Sure.
At the same time, this is, the other option is to put this together and then pass a resolution to assess the property owners, which means, of course, we'll need the designation of the lot, however we wanna do the assessment, by footage, by whatever.
And you'll have to appoint an assessment equalization board for appeals.
So this is a choice we have to make on how we wanna get this done.
It takes a while.
Yeah, okay. I'd rather see the sidewalk done somehow, at least the repair part of it. The other part maybe would be cheaper if we just have to do the east side, I guess. These are the options. I don't, you know...
There's some more options.
Debbie?
Go ahead.
Well, two things. There's a mention in here of bike path extension. Is that just a typo?
Probably, because he's under design contract with that.
Because if it's going to the river, we don't want it.
Run to their scope of engineering services.
Oh, 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 design phases of the...
And I'm assuming that's just...
It's the last contract.
Typo. So. The second comment, Nancy actually wrote a little note that made me wonder. With, with Ohio Avenue when we did this, I think it wasn't this expensive, but we did it in-house.
We had Andy Stone do it. He's a...
He may be back, right?
By the time we get this done.
By the time, oh, yeah. I mean, that is always another option. But I, one reason I like these proposals sometimes from engineers is that's how much time he's, you're spending of his to do design. And he likes doing a couple of projects like that too, don't get me wrong. But it usually takes longer because he's fitting it in amongst his normal duties.
But we remember that the Ohio Avenue sidewalk was just a mess. And then somehow, I don't know what he did, but it got done and the price went down. So what a deal. I mean, you know, so this is the high point. We're looking for a more reasonable thing that avoids cutting down the tree, that doesn't cost that much money. We'll wait for him to come home.
Okay.
I'm not saying, I'm just speaking for me.
But I'm also here, let me talk with Code about the replacement of what's existing out there now and see what we can do on the west side of the sidewalk.
Talk to the property. That's, you know, I mean, they look at this bill...
Well, there's two property owners there in between playground, drive and cost. Both, both of those are sidewalks that need replaced. The others are, a couple of them in a couple of different sections. The OU parking lot forty-three and continue on in front of fifty-six Stewart. And really, from there on down, I think it's not in bad shape.
Bajinka?
All right, I was gonna say, since we're talking about designing the sidewalk, is this gonna be some, you know, like, really exceptionally beautiful sidewalk if it's designed? I guess that's my question.
Concrete, four-foot concrete slab.
Or if it's replaced, is it just like, here's a piece that's broken and you kinda fix it so it always looks piecemeal? I guess that...
There's some places that don't have sidewalks.
Right, I know that.
That's where the design comes in.
Okay. So it's more than saying four feet with a curb?
Yeah. So, sorry. So Mayor, then are, is it feasible then that we could do the replacement now? And then we wouldn't be able to do this project until next summer? As far as putting in sidewalk where there is no sidewalk?
Right. I don't see it happening before then because I think it'd be a disruption to the pedestrian traffic to have the one side torn up, but...
So you notice the fact you have to have somebody watching before you jump?
And see, I think what Paul, some of Paul's points is if you read the, as I recall, the assessment equalization board stuff, you have to have a design. It can't just be...
Right.
Fix it, yeah. Fix, make something.
A country person that does that work all the time, saying, oh, I'll give you a price, such and such to do this. That, that's not acceptable under, under the law. You have to have a P, a professional engineer design it. And that, that increases the cost.
Right. So we work on, what, replacement now?
So if, if the Code Office...
Well, it sounds like we really have maybe four property owners to talk to.
So if the Code Office talks to them in the next short period of time and says they need to be fixed, the city's gonna be building sidewalk next summer?
It will.
No?
We hope.
Then, well, but that's what we'd say. And so fix it by next summer or, or we'll fix it as we go. So they have plenty of time to get it done.
Or they can do it.
There's some elevation issues. Maybe we should, yeah, physically get down.
See, that's why I was gonna comment. I'm not sure that that is an overly expensive estimate for engineering because on the, what is, the west side, the riverside, there are elevation issues. You're dealing with your regular right-of-way. You're dealing with a bunch of property owners. It all has to be surveyed. So I'm not sure that it's that unreasonable package.
Well, maybe if we get Andy home and he makes everything straight and does it well, then we'll...
Look at that tree, please. I don't see how you can get around it. Anyway, that's, that's my editorial comment.
But I was talking about on the east side, Jim, because it goes like this and then it goes down and then it goes up.
Oh, you're talking about the east side.
On the east side, yeah. If you were, and I'm not a skateboarder, mind you, but if I were, I would fix on that one for a while.
But the condition of the pavement though is pretty good. Because, because most of those were done as houses were rehabbed.
But they were, they were done on a...
At different times.
At hog bases, right? I mean, it's not...
It wasn't a coordinated project.
No.
That's, and that's always what we get into when we have a particularly bad piece of sidewalk and we go into the property owner and say, replace your sidewalk in front of your house. Well, Code reads six-foot inch curb, so that establishes the height from whatever, wherever the pavement surface is. Now, somebody else might have put those curbs in fifteen years ago when the pavement surface was two inches different. And so you get the roll effect. And that's what happens. And I know that there, even though, you look at High Street, we eliminated a lot of that by going in and milling that street. And so we were able to get it fairly level, but you do see the blotches. I mean, brand-new concrete, old concrete. And you're gonna see that until it gets dirty enough and they don't power wash.
Just spit some gum on it quick.
Okay, so it sounds like the first thing you're gonna do is talk to Code and see what the possibilities are on this. And next thing, of course, is hopefully we can get Andy in here to do something first. And I'll review the assessment system.
Right.
Give it a chance.
Well, anything, anything else on the sidewalks? Next item has been eliminated. Discussed, that was the East State Street and Carpenter intersection.
So you're gonna have an ordinance up there?
Right, and so ordinance up on no right turn on red.
I actually, I, I think the alternative of cutting that, you know, median is still something we ought to consider.
Okay. You go and then I'll go.
The vegetation in that particular traffic island is fairly low already. I think it's really the grade of the street that people coming up, Stimson Avenue there are coming up a hill. The way it's set up makes it hard to see. This same recommendation came to us from the Near East Side Neighborhood Association about two years ago.
The retaining wall, I feel is more...
Doesn't seem to bother me.
The right turn on red?
Does, ma'am. I kind of... You have to keep edging forward and then just go for it.
Yeah, it's like a punch it when you're up there. Go or don't go.
And try it, can't we?
What, try?
Personal field trip between now and next Monday for every... Everybody, I will go and look at it with a new eye.
I come that way every day.
Try crossing.
Go down to Madison and make a circle.
Try crossing, try, try crossing Carpenter.
We'll put the pedestrians out there too. We'll do a whole, whole test. Have people cross it at certain times.
Well, I was just raising it.
Pedestrian dummies.
First aid person.
I mean, I agree with Debbie, Debbie as well. I mean, that vegetation is really low. I don't know how much lower you can get. I mean, mulch, a bed of mulch is really our other option. I mean, speed bump.
I mean, because they book up that street because they wanna get through the light. Part of it comes because people aren't being cautious.
Right. Well, I guess while, while we're on the issue of speed, before we get to the bus, speed is a problem in the city. I mean, did you guys get the email from Seven Brown Avenue on whether or not people shouting to slow down to speeders? I mean, what can we do about the speed in the city? Is it that big of a problem? Do we need to reinforce speed, change speed? I've been getting a lot of complaints about speed as well.
I mean, I'm not being facetious, but really, it's a process of people slow down when? See a police officer.
Right.
Right? And how much money have you got and are willing to spend at it?
They mean cardboard cutouts?
Detection cameras in and, like, red light cameras and all of that.
This area is enforced, target enforcement area? Do those help at all? This area's enforced by?
Pardon?
Like, target enforcement areas, those signs that you see in some areas where they're threatening you that this area is watched often.
And put one on every street.
Yeah.
And they'll say somebody's joking.
If you keep them up in the same place long enough, they can really like children playing song signs or the speed limit sign. I mean, if you've driven that street for the third time that day and you've done that for six months or a year, do you consciously see the signs? It's not, you're doing it out of memory now. You're not in a new location and looking and saying, oh, what's the speed limit and what's that sign say?
Well, I'm, I'm... I'm sorry, I'm curious. How many speeding tickets do we give out compared to park? I mean, I know we have tons of parking tickets, but I was gonna say, knock on wood, I have not gotten a speeding ticket in this town, although I've got lots of parking tickets. So I was just curious, how many do we give out? I've seen people speeding in Court Street.
Well, it comes out in the weekly report that I send you.
Okay.
Says it right there, how many were issued over that past week.
All right.
And that will vary because of staffing, other issues, I mean, that's going on, but tickets are being written.
They are. Okay. And Amy?
Let's face it, if it's Saturday night and your, and your police force has just made its thirty-eighth run in an eight-hour shift, dealing with calls for service, you're not out checking speed.
No, I know, but I mean, sometimes during the day, right in the middle of Court Street, there's some person who just...
But with ninety miles of streets, where do you wanna put the officers?
No, I know. I was just, I was just exploring.
And see, a lot of our complaints of speeding come on residential streets where there are children around, people walking. You're going at a much slower pace. And most of the time, other than a patrol, the officers are on where all the traffic is. Because even sitting in a squad car on Richland Avenue or Union Street and people see the squad car, you see brake lights.
Right.
And that slows the, a majority of the traffic down in this. Every city, I think, has this problem. And until the residents of the city all decide not to speed so much, it's gonna be there. Because most of the time when we do those targets, like I remember when we did on May Avenue and Cableway a number of years ago, fifty percent of the first people we got were residents of Cableway and May Avenue.
Very complainers.
You remember that, don't you, Nancy?
We've met the enemy again.
Okay, well, we're just putting it out there as an issue.
Nancy, did you have something?
Yes, I was going to say, at least two neighborhood associations have said to me over the summer period that they would...
over the summer period that they would have test speed bumps, Morris Avenue being one, and around Highland Park another.
Speed bumps?
Speed bumps, yes, 'cause they feel that the one on Congress works really well. And so, um, North Con.
Right, the speed bump line.
Yes, and so that would not be something you would put on Columbia as much as I'd like it, um, but maybe on some of those streets where there are children, say at Highland Park.
Speed bumps?
Yeah, and so I don't know, we'll talk about that later.
Speed bumps are.
For while everybody was resistant to speed bumps, and the one on Congress, to me, seems like it works very well. Some people don't like it, 'cause it makes them slow down, but.
What about the rumble strips? Are those?
I think they're more of a problem. They slow people down, but I think a lot of people don't like the noise.
Some people swerve, too.
To miss the rumble strip.
Yes.
Maybe you should do rent a cop, like, $150 for a cop on the street corner.
We could do some fake cardboard cutout police cars.
That's it, but that's for another time, I told them that probably we had to get going.
Sure.
People on Morris Avenue have been talking about this for the last couple of years, especially the, um, crosswalk over to the school, that a lot of people blow through the stop sign, and the idea of raised sidewalks, those, um, the broad, rather than a speed bump that's a really sharp jolt, just those raised sidewalks are enough to slow people, or raised crosswalks are enough to slow people down.
So you rattle your teeth off the roof if you're going too fast.
Yeah.
That's the point.
Yeah, that's the whole point. Paul, did you have something?
No.
They'll be back, I think the neighborhood associations will be coming in shortly.
Okay. Um, okay, next on the agenda is bus system update, turning it over to Member Patterson.
I just wanted to bring everyone up to date of some of the things that have occurred in terms of our bus system. Uh, Leyd Law replaced our onsite manager during the summer, and so we are operating with an interim manager, partly because there's, there's not a lot of point in trying to put in place a new manager at the end of a contract, and this contract ends in December. So I just wanted you to know that, and one of the residual effects of that is that we removed even the attempt to change routes before January. So now there will be an October hearing for a change of routes in January. It's the, the changes that we've been talking about for about six months now, not, um, not extreme, but taking out, um, the, the gap, the period of time that the, um, one route, the East State route didn't run, and, um, so eliminating that gap and eliminating the circular pattern through the planes. Instead, Columbus Road will go up and come back, and the Union Street will go up and come back. That's the main gist of those. But the hearing is in October, and after the hearing, Melissa will come to council to explain exactly what's on the changes. We also had some major vehicle maintenance work done this summer after the change in management, and all of our stock is up and running, but it's, it's something that could become an issue. The late-night runs on the weekend is going to continue on the, the south side, um, that was very successful in the spring. At the same time, um, the university, um, is talking about very soon adding a weekend route, um, back and forth out East State Street for Friday evening and Saturday evening to move students out to the shopping areas and the movie theater and, and so on, and, and that's been a proposal of theirs.
It's gonna be a weekend route?
Uh, yes, and it looks like that's going to happen. We do have a request for proposals that is, is going out, this will be for the January contract, and for the first time ever, we have included in that request for proposal a pre-bid meeting. That pre-bid meeting is on October 5th at 10 o'clock in council chambers, and hopefully we'll have some companies bidding on, um, our contract, and hopefully we'll get some people here to explain what they might be able to bring to, um, our situation, and we have included information that we are looking to consolidate services with the university in that. That's, uh, the next regular task force meeting is the 21st, a Thursday at 10 o'clock, and we did have a public hearing for the, um, for the grant, and it was very well-attended, meaning, what was it, four people? And I think that was the most she'd ever had, she, she was delighted. And Paul was there, and I was there, and it was, it was informative, it was a good meeting. Questions about anything that's happening with the buses? It's nothing that needs immediate attention, I just wanted you to know, especially with this pre-bid meeting coming up. Debbie?
Um, at one point, this was a broader discussion about transportation that included some discussion about bike.
It still is, but this, I'm just addressing what's happened with our buses right now. The, the inclusion of bike paths and, and all of that is still a part of the discussion, but we have the two crises right now, one, the change of management, two, the fact that we have to, um, have a new contract in January.
And then the other piece, I've heard from some people about the lack of services in terms of handicapped accessible transportation, and particularly, you know, people just need to get to doctor's appointments and things, and I don't know really what, whether something related to some kind of on-demand service is gonna be part of the bid, or if you've talked about that?
Yes, it has to be.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's required by law.
Okay, because it, it seems, I'm hearing from people who are feeling like there aren't a lot of options right now, um, but some of that.
They have the same options they've had all along, there have not been any changes made, and so they can call and get the bus service, um, plus there are some agencies out there for, for paratransit, um, programs, but it's, um, it's the same, no changes have been made.
So who is the interim manager? Who is this?
Daryl, Mary, do you know his last name?
I've not met him.
He, he's in-house, he, he already worked for us.
Okay.
Um, his name is Daryl, there is also a gentleman that, that comes from Leyd Law and is here during the week to kind of oversee what's going on, and so they're keeping pretty close tabs on it at the current time.
Questions about the buses in general, I saw something, I was out in Minneapolis this summer visiting a friend, and on the front of their buses, they have this thing that folds down that you can put your bicycle on?
We will have those, um, when, when we have them, when we get new buses, any of the new buses will have the capability of carrying the bicycles, and it may be that we can retrofit some of the ones that we have.
Yeah, I thought it was super interesting to see that, they flip it down, throw your bike on, get on the bus, you know, if it were to rain later that day, you know, ride home in the rain or something like that, very interesting.
I'll look into the retrofitting, I hadn't even really thought about that. Anything else on?
Okay, miscellaneous, I have one item, but the mayor also has another item, and I'll let him go first.
I have something I'm gonna ask, too.
Okay, and Nancy has something?
Well, I'll wait for the last.
You, you'll be last, okay. So the miscellaneous for the mayor is the lease for the fairgrounds, did you wanna discuss that?
The fairgrounds?
And everyone has a copy of it, too?
Yeah. Fairgrounds wants to continue with some modifications to the lease agreement we've been in under, within for the last 10 years. The major differences that we have, and not differences, is we very seldom rent very many spaces out in the summertime, it always causes them a little bit of problems, even if we have two or three of them rented during fair, and they would just rather say, only rent it from the Thursday before Labor Day to the Monday after graduation.
Okay.
So the time period would change. We would still do all of the things that we had been doing in maintaining the lot, et cetera. The split this time that we agreed upon is 45% to the fair board, 45% to the city, and 10% to pay for the sidewalk improvements until the sidewalk improvements are paid for. Okay? So that means we'll get that over time, but it should be adequate to get it, it doesn't put to them a, a big expense at any one point in time, but they're in essence using a future revenue stream for it. So I'd recommend that also. It is for five years with a five-year right of renewal. I think those were the, you know, the, I think we did take out of there about the paving of it, because we would never, never did come to an agreement with them with paving. I would like that the cover ordinance of this one direct the monies paid for to first go into capital improvement fund, to pay for what we paid for 10 years ago of doing it, fifty-some thousand dollars, and never got reimbursed, and always went in the general fund, 'cause I never remembered to ask you to change that diversion, and if we don't say it in ordinance, it automatically to the general fund, then that's, once that's done, it really should go into the street department fund, because they're the ones putting extra gravel out there, that's the crew that goes and mows the weeds and spruces it up and everything, really, the general fund doesn't have any involvement, it's just gotten the revenue for 10 years.
So you ordinance that?
Well, any ordinance adopting this con, you just have one section directing the rep, the, uh, auditor's office to receipt the funds into capital improvements until it reaches the, you know, the improvements that were made in the original construction, I can give you that dollar amount figure, forget about interest, and then, then, once that's done, it would go into the street fund. Who actually does the maintenance and has been eating those costs a little bit, and I think it's just a, a fairer way to do it.
Um, Mayor, just for informational purposes, I'm sure this has been asked before, how many spaces are down there?
Two hundred and eighty-five.
And what do those go for?
I think it's $65, but I think per quarter. But it's not been fully rented the last couple of years.
Right.
But I've seen a lot of parking spaces that haven't been, uh, because I, I think that part of the impact of councils and everything, adding the parking things, it's been enough years, uh, and then I do think in the major complexes, they're not 100% occupied, so they run.
Yeah.
So I do wanna do a little work on that, maybe, I don't know if price is really the driving force, because all you, if, if, if you don't have a parking space, one $20 ticket and a tow 24 hours later will wipe out a quarter's.
Right.
Maybe two quarters worth of payments to stay at the fairgrounds.
Right. Any other questions on the, so we can bring that up for first reading next week?
Sounds good.
Okay, I know, my miscellaneous is, was brought to my attention today, and in the past, I know that people have spoke to this issue of the lights on Congress Street, um, from State Street on down to Union Street. I know that it's a concern of mainly pedestrians that cross there, that people who, um, once you're sitting at the red light down on State Street, or the intersection of State Street and Congress, and it turns green, you probably have to go about 45 miles per hour to make that next light, which people are doing, which I will say is dumb, because if you make the Washington light, you're not going to make the Union light, so you're just ending up sitting at another red light. So I don't know what we do in terms of improving the safety with that intersection, I mean, people are just flying through that state street, soon as it hits green, I mean, people are like pedaled to the metal, flying up that hill and trying to make the Washington light.
I know where to put the police car now, thank you.
There's nowhere to hide, though.
Um, but I know, I know somebody brought that.
I don't have to hide, you might just have to have them.
That's right. Well, I, I mean, I mean, the police station is right there, too, so I don't understand why people are, are just taking that risk, but.
Well, they're, hopefully, aren't at the police station, they're out patrolling.
Well, right.
But as we explained before, all of those lights from Carpenter, State, et cetera, are all timed to traffic in that direction.
Right.
And the Court Street lights are to go in that direction, so in order to get the timing there, you're gonna mess up one or the other.
Okay. Right. So stop speeding.
That'd be nice.
Well, I mean, seriously, I mean, no matter how fast you go, you're not gonna make both those lights, so whether you sit at the red light on Washington Street, or you sit at the red light on Union Street, you're gonna be sitting at the red light, so just chill out, slow down, you're gonna hit somebody.
Chill sign.
So slow down.
Chill sign.
Chill signs.
Chill out.
Don't even try.
You're not gonna make it.
Okay, we're gonna punch you.
And then Nancy?
I would like to ask the mayor, I heard a lot during the summer, I don't know if it's just the people I ran into, 'cause I tried to avoid almost everyone, but. They were, people are complaining about the new brick part of North Court, have you heard this before?
Yes.
I've got some emails, I've got some letters.
Yeah.
I got a thank you card from somebody that says, boy, it slows down traffic, I think I can do it on Congress.
Right.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of, and I think that the first part's being so smooth, it's a bit of a contrast. On the other hand, I'd like, I did call up and tell Ron what a fine job I thought was done around the middle school, I think they did a wonderful job. And then also, um, there were some issues in my neighborhood, and he didn't get all of them, but he did a really good diplomatic job, and I'd like to recognize him in public for saving the flower beds up there, and, um, basically dealing with the citizens in a very good way, so I appreciate that. So, I mean, the North Court Street brick's okay, but there were lots of good things that happened, too.
Right, and, and Ron has told me he wants to, to, to roll that and see if it can settle back into the sand base a little better, but they did not sort by size on the bricks. Now, when they did the one side, which is rougher than the other, I mean, they recognized that, and so the uneven, they tried to keep them even in the traffic lane and didn't care in the parking lane, because they had the bricks clean, and they had a deadline of all the students coming back, so they had to get it down. And I can imagine what, if, if we make that decision in the next couple of weeks to relay that lane of court, I can see the traffic jams that it will, will have, but I mean, if it's having too many complaints, that's, that's what we're gonna have to do.
Maybe next summer? If you have to.
Just sees how smooth it gets, but I mean, it's.
Is it winter's?
It, it sounds, I think, worse than it is, but.
Right. My car's so rattly, I can't tell.
But we'll get continued letters to the editor, and emails and other things on that one, yeah.
But they did a really fine job, except on that one.
Anybody else have anything for the Transportation Committee? And if you do save it for two weeks from now?
We do save it for next month.
Then we, Transportation is adjourned.
Okay, Communications Committee, I think we will all agree that we have communicated enough.
I have one.
And so, I have, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes.
Obviously not.
You go first.
Well, mine is just what we were discussing earlier, that, um, there seems to be, um, some communication, that there is a, a conversation with council scheduled for the 18th of September, and at this point, there is not.
No.
Um, allegedly, the subject was Halloween, the Halloween meeting is a clean and safe Halloween meeting on the 14th at the library, not a conversation with council here at the city building.
Right, right. And having brought up conversation with council, we have to reorganize for this year, and we will be having them again, but we haven't scheduled them yet.
I just, I wanted to throw this out there, after meeting with Student Senate today, they would like to come and give a presentation to City Council sooner as opposed to later, sort of, uh, an overview of what they wanna give to the city this year, what can they give to the city this year, just sort of, you know, coordinating of, uh, communication between the two. Um, so I guess, just asking council, when might be a good time for that, maybe two weeks from now, maybe next week?
Do we have a fifth Monday?
We do. Uh, not this month, next month we do.
Okay, well, that's too early.
But it's like Halloween, would that?
Yeah, that's, that's the, October 30th.
During regular council or committees?
I'll overtake that one off.
Committees would be better. So maybe two weeks from now, then, that'll be okay?
Okay.
We put that, okay.
Student Senate, too.
Student Senate, yes, so Morgan was just here, but she had to go, um, but yeah, she'd certainly like to come and speak to council.
Twenty-fifth, okay.
Twenty-fifth, I'll let her know, twenty-fifth.
Okay.
And?
Any other communication issues? Communications Committee? Right now, can I say we've probably communicated enough, so my committee is adjourned?
Louise, what's your answer?
My committee is adjourned.